This time I would like to call the order, Harden County Board of Education meeting. And first thing on agenda, I'd like for you to stand and we'll say the place is lit.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all. Board commits, John, you usually have those up.
I have them. To improve our effectiveness, the Harden County Schools Board Team commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district and support district goals, and support board decisions.
All right, thank you. And recognitions.
We will bring those back next month.
Next month, we're going to try to get some folks that need to be recognized or praised back in here.
I like that.
All right, focus on academics, and Mr. Sutton's going to take care of that, Forrest, I believe.
Yes, sir. Ready to go.
I have a sports analogy for you. That's how I speak is in sports analogy. So tonight, we're going to talk about a varsity athlete that plays two sports. And this varsity athlete plays a six-month basketball season, and they play a six-month tennis season. Now, what do you think about the basketball player that plays for six months basketball, doesn't pick up a tennis racket? So when they get down with the basketball season, do you think they jump into tennis and immediately play a tennis match? No, you know, they don't do that. And what I say about that is, that two-sport athlete, they focus right back on the fundamentals when they get back in that new sport. They pre-assess where they're at with their skills, they break things down into smaller parts, they practice those skills, and then they get ready for that match. It's kind of like implementing new skills and new content. And I say that six months of those two sports, because if you think about from March, April, May, June, July, August, those six months that we spent in NTI, summer break, deciding how we're going to get back into school, we brought kids back with the intention of doing that same thing that athlete would do. We went right back to focus on the fundamentals this year. We pre-assessed the kids, breaking things down into smaller parts, you know, that's kind of what we're trying to do. And we're trying to implement those new skills and new content at this point. I want to say that we've had a great start. I want to say that speaking to teachers and principals today at a few schools, I guess the word I got out of them was depth of understanding, was teachers are actually maybe not covering as much content two days a week, but they're going deeper with the content they are teaching. So after the six-month break and focusing back on those fundamentals, those critical skills, those grade-level content, I think our teachers are doing a great job getting us started this year. And really, one of the most important days we have is our Wednesday instruction day and how we're using that. So I brought three principals in here tonight to talk to you all about how they're using their Wednesday intervention enrichment day. I've got Ms. Clark, I've got Mr. Wells, and I've got Mr. Estes. Now, just a few minutes ago, Mr. Wells and Mr. Estes were debating on who the best speaker was, and whoever the best speaker was got to go first tonight. So with that being said, Ms. Clark, you're up.
I figured they was going to.
I don't know how I didn't get in on the vote. I would have picked Mr. Estes.
Two to one.
So at Lakewood, we decided at our school on Wednesdays to bring all the students for each letter. So we do one day of all the A kids, and then the next Wednesday, we do all the B kids, and we just flip-flop back and forth. And when we started talking about it, the reason that we decided to bring all of them was because at our school, we have a time every day called win time, which stands for what I need. And so if every day, we have set aside a 40-minute time to give kids what they need, and every kid goes to something during that time, we didn't feel like we could target just one group of kids every Wednesday, because we've already established as a philosophy at our school that everybody needs something. And so every Wednesday, we have all the A-day kids or all the B-day kids. And the kinds of things that we're doing are, we're finishing their assessments, those pre-assessments that Mr. Sutton was talking about, to find out where the kids are after being on NTI and on break for six months. So we're doing fluency checks, phonics assessments, math fact assessments, those kind of things. We're also giving them lots of time at our school to spend on Lexia, Pathblazers, Reflex, all those online learning platforms that we pay for, because in our school district, we don't have great internet. And so when they're at home, they don't get a lot of time to spend on those, so we try to make that up on Wednesdays. We're also teaching them lessons about how to access materials offline with a Chromebook, because if we ever do have to go to NTI, and we give them a Chromebook to do their work at home on Google Classroom, we want them to have the tools to be able to do that at home even without internet. And Chrome has settings that you can turn on on a Chromebook, where you can be offline and still be able to access your materials, and then you can bring that Chromebook, park in the school parking lot, upload your assignments back, and download what you need, and then go back home and work again. And so we're trying to train them how to do that now. We've even got kindergarten and first graders right now who could tell you how to turn your Chromebook to offline status and be able to do their work. So we've been using that time to do that. We also still offer intervention enrichment time on Wednesdays, so they still go to their win time classes. I had one teacher tell me yesterday that she surveyed her class and said, hey, what would you guys like to do if we had some extra time on Wednesdays? And they said, we want to do research projects. So they're going to do some research projects on topics that are interesting to them, which builds a whole other skill set, so we're excited about that. And we also give them time to work on their at-home work packets when they come in on Wednesdays, and the teachers use that time to review with them and dig a little bit deeper into those concepts. So that's kind of what we've been using Wednesdays for. It's been really successful, the three Wednesdays that we've done it, and we look forward to continuing that plan and having all of our kids in there. Any questions or things I can answer? All right, awesome. So now, I guess we'll go to middle school next, right?
Yeah, sounds great. We'll put the hard questions to the men, okay?
Since I made you go first.
That's right.
Mark said something about age before beauty, but I guess, but I'm always the stepchild, the middle child, so I guess he's the beauty, so anyway. So at JTA, we took a little bit of different approach to welcome our Wednesday students. We first wanted to slow roll it a little bit, just so that we're successful, so we didn't bring all our Group A and Group B kids in. So what we did is we invited about 130 kids. Our teachers were intentional with their invitations. Some were students that were based on their KSI or their MAP scores from last winter and just their performance before you went to COVID. Knowing that there are six months of a gap there, we know there's a lot of skills that need to be done. But we also targeted our GT kids also, so we didn't want them to miss their extensions and their services too. So how we explained that to parents was that they were going to get interventions, extensions, special ed services, GT services. And so it's been a great, great experience. The first group, we invited 129 kids, 120 showed up, so I thought that was awesome. This past Wednesday, we invited 130, and 106 showed up. But what was interesting about those who didn't show up, the parents would either call or email me and say, hey, thank you for the invitation, but you know, we feel like our students are doing fine right now, you can use this invitation for someone else. And I appreciate that, but I tried to explain to them that there's still six months that every kid missed something through NTI or just being off. And so the invitation will be outstanding to them each and every Wednesday, and we're just going to keep building and building until we probably get all A and all B coming on those days. And we hope to do that by November is what we hope, is get all of our students in. But the classes have been great, the extensions are like research projects, the interventions go all the way back to math facts to vocabulary, fluency. All the kids stayed pretty much engaged, and it was a fun process. And our teachers are loving it. And after the first Wednesday, they were like, can we bring all the kids in? And I said, well, again, we just wanted to slow roll it, make sure we're successful, and then we'll eventually build up to that process where all A and all B will be in on those different Wednesdays. The other thing that I want to mention is that, you know, talking to parents and just trying to get our students back into the mode of five days a week is school. You know, we still have a lot of kids that think that it's only two days, and there's other three or just, hey, whatever. So we're really trying to sell this, that, you know, education, our schooling process, the learning and teaching is a five-day-a-week thing. So we're trying to get over that hurdle as much as anything. Any questions?
So how are we doing transportation on the Wednesday?
Regular bus routes. It's just, we just tell the parents that buses run on regular bus routes, regular times, or they can drop off. And we did have some parents this week that took advantage of the GT services and only brought their, came and picked their students up after they got done with their GT stuff, but you know, but transportation is as normal.
So it's got to be a real challenge for the driver to remember, does he stop here on Monday or Tuesday?
It is. However, you all have to send in that list to Chris on Monday mornings. So they are given the list of students on Monday.
Of a possibility Wednesday student.
I give mine on Friday the week before, so that we can make sure that bus drivers are known. The parents, I try to do a Google Doc where they check yes or no and.
So you have A and B students possibly mixed on.
No, sir.
No mix?
No mix.
That's what you're working towards then?
Well, just next week is Group A again, so eventually, and a couple, by November, I want, when it's A week, all the As to come in, and then the next week, all the Bs will come in.
So that handles the assigned bus seat, because they just sit where they're supposed to sit at their A group on an A day?
Yes. In just a moment, Ms. Sutton's going to share about contact tracing, which is the reason we don't bring in A and B together. Initially, that was our plan, is to bring that, but then once we were more educated of what contact tracing looked like, we said, we'll keep A here and then B.
Okay, every time we learn something, it affects what we do next, right?
Yes.
All right. I will give you one other interesting fact. On our A week, we did have a few OLA parents that sent their children. Of course, we have OLA teachers, and now they're in person, so that was a good thing. I mean, so it was just like.
Well, that's interesting.
Yeah, so, but we have OLA teachers, so we didn't mix them with our students. But it was just interesting that they found out about Wednesday, and they sent their children, and then now we have them back in person. So pretty interesting fact, it was neat, but I'm glad to have them back. I think we do a better job in person, just as personal opinion of mine. So we'll take them back whenever they want to come back.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report.
Mr. Wells is up last.
Last but not least.
There you go.
Mr. Sutton told me to keep my comments short, so I'm going to try to keep it under an hour, best I can.
That'd be fine.
I keep talking about John Harden.
I may stop you a little before, okay?
Okay, all right. I do get excited when I talk about what our staff is doing, what our students are doing at John Harden. We had a program a couple of years ago called Focus 40. We've actually done that for the past few years, and it's an intervention program that we've always used. I feel like that's one of our strengths, is our intervention program. So we're using the same strategies we've used the last few years in the intervention on Wednesdays. Right now, we're kind of like what Kevin said, we're introducing it slowly. We send invitations, our teachers fill out a Google sheet, there's invitations that our office manager and our front office staff complete. They send notes or invitations to the students they're invited in. Last week, we invited 130 as well, and we had a pretty good turnout on that. The students come in based on their content area, get a little extra help with that teacher one-on-one. I can relate as well on the OLA teachers, they were excited, they're having individual conferences with their students as well. Now, I only had a few come in the building, but several had video conferences with their students one-on-one. And they're saying, you know, in the high school setting, I'm teaching one or two classes in person, and then one or two classes online, and because I'm transitioning from one setting to the next, I don't always have time to meet with my students one-on-one and give that extra attention during the normal weekday. So Wednesday allows them to have a little bit of extra time to meet one-on-one virtually with their students and provide that extra assistance. I'm proud of, several of our staff members have been creative in what they're doing. Our JROTC is bringing in A students that are involved in JROTC and doing some extra drill work with those students. Our transition readiness coach is bringing in students, she has an appointment card she uses, students make an appointment with her, they come in, and she talks to them about their transition career or college readiness and what she can do to help them. Even our youth service director has taken on a role with this. She is targeting students that she would normally work with during school day and bringing them in on Wednesday, providing mental health services for them, making sure they're meeting their academic needs as well. We're looking down the road at some ideas that we have that we would normally do during Focus 40. ACT prep, we're talking about providing some ACT prep during that time. We were mental health services for all students. Clubs and organizations, looking at our academic clubs and seeing, can we find a way to bring in the Group A students that might be involved in a club or organization, and then the next week do Group B. FAFSA forms, preparing FAFSA forms, and having our staff help students and possibly parents with that part of it. And then for our special needs students, progress monitoring, that's required during the week. It's difficult right now because of the limited time in the building, but our teachers are bringing in students on Wednesdays to complete that process too. Questions?
The FAFSA, I think if you've not been through that recently, you don't understand what an onerous thing that is. And the poor kids that get stuck into that, they look at that and say, well, I guess I'm not going to college, because it's a horrendous form. It's more an online process now, but it's quite a process.
That became a big part of our Focus 40 intervention through the last few years, unintentionally. But we found, like you said, the need, and parents were calling and saying, would you please sit down with my child? And a lot of times, parents would come in, and we're able to help them, our counselors sit down with them and go through that form. That additional time has been really good for that.
That's, I mean, you're changing their lives with that. That's making a difference. I appreciate that you're keeping on that. That's one of the things, I mean, so many things, you got to choose what you're going to do, and that's one of the things, it's real important to keep that up. I mean, it's real important to keep it all up, of course, but that's really good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What are you going to do with your other 50 minutes, Mark?
I'll take.
I'll buy you back. He yields to Sutton.
I just want to say thank you for, I guess I shouldn't say being bold, but just making the decision you all did as a Board of Education, as superintendent, to put our kids back in school. I've heard a lot of people say, well, we're not back in school, this county's not map testing. And my answer to that is, we're not that county, we're Harden County Schools. And you know, we do what's best for kids in Harden County. And so, you know, when we talk about the ACT prep and the interventions and the map testing we're going to do for every OLA in-person kid, may be a bold try, but that's what we do here at Harden County. So thank you all for doing that for our kids.
Don't go yet. You've got 49 minutes left.
Well, I can talk. I'll go back to my analogy.
If you don't mind, I do want you to touch upon the counselor that we have hired using the funds that were given to us by KDE and how that position is being utilized. Again, this was a funding source of KDE.
This was huge. The state gave every district $43,000 to put toward a mental health counselor. And we were fortunate in the fact that when we merged with West Point Independent Schools, we received their $43,000 on top of this. We've got $86,000 to cover a full mental health counselor for this year. So nothing that came out of any board funds, it was a state grant, and she's going to be doing mental health counseling across our district. She is a clinical mental health counselor, which means she can bill for Medicaid, which means, just like you would if you were going through Communicator, E-Town Partners, Astra, any of those partnerships that we have. But she's already, we've already partnered her with our new director of student services, interim director of student services, Kim Atkins, and she's already working with Rudy Garcia, our district social worker. And she's already got kids lined up at the alternative school and other schools here in our district. We're already targeting students that need these mental health services, and a lot of kids have been through a lot of trauma, a lot of depression in these last six months, and this person is going to be reaching out and meeting with these kids. So we're excited about having her, and I hope this is a position that is not just a one-year position. One-year state-funded, but I think that we can make a go of this, so.
Did she came on board when?
Probably about a week and a half ago.
Okay.
We received the funds this summer, and we had 18 applicants, had probably three clinical, I say master-degreed, mental health counselors that could bill Medicaid due. And also, she can lead trainings, she can train counselors, and she's trained in reality therapy. So I'm really thinking a lot of the skills that she has is going to, you know, translate into supporting our counselors, working directly with family resource centers. So she's already made connections there. It's all-encompassing, and I'm excited to see what she can do.
She will be available for our OLA students as well, correct?
Absolutely.
So she can do virtual counseling, so as we know, some of these students have not been out of their homes much since March, which is very confining, so.
We probably need to do a better job of getting her out there to them too. She made a four- to five-minute video, I would love for you all to see that video. I had her meet with Gina Ryan last week, I sent it out to the counselors, Ms. Sutton sent it out to the family resource centers, because it's hard in this time to get it out in front of everybody all at one time, so I may try to get that shared out to you all so you all can see her as well. Name is Sarah Murphy, outstanding young lady, she's been servicing a lot of areas, her last stop was in Boyle County, and we stole it from Boyle County, so we're glad to have her.
Yeah, we shared that on social.
Oh, good. The video?
Yes.
There you go.
Very good.
Yep.
Well, I appreciate you looking after the hell of our students. That's really, that's really important.
It's huge. And I think this is just a starting point. I mean, districts normally this size would probably need two to three, and you got to realize, some of our service providers have had to furlough workers because of business over the last six months. So we're actually changing even partners that we work with through some of our alternative services. So we're going to have to use her in this gap time before those services improve.
Before they spool back up.
Yeah, spool back up. So this is a need for our district, big time.
Well, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton.
Appreciate it. Very good, you know, and I got to reiterate what you said there. We currently went against recommendations, a lot of people said, wait and see what the others do. The last 14 years that I've been on a school board, our administration leadership, school leadership, principals have taken us to greater heights. Every meeting I go to, when they say we're going to do something, I'm sitting there going, you know, we're already doing it. And I have just loved the whole situation, the whole time I've been on the board. And I think you all have, you know, there's been a few little issues, there'll always be issues, but when you're leading, then somebody else has got a lot of catch-up work to do. So I appreciate y'all's work.
And we aren't hearing other districts reach out saying how it's done. Seems like it's working for you guys. I know we asked you to do something impossible, but it seems like you're doing it.
Now, I think the important half of the Sutton family has some speaking to do for us.
Yes.
Come on in.
And Board, I have asked Ms. Sutton to be here this evening to do a presentation on what happens when we have a positive case, what are we doing, what steps are we following? Just want the public to be educated on what our part of this is and what our community's part is, to include the Lincoln Trail Health Department, Hardin Memorial Hospital, Cumberland Health, all of these groups working together. It takes a lot of organization, and Ms. Sutton has done a phenomenal job of the record-keeping. My goodness, it's a lot of record-keeping. I have offered her help, just FYI, and then she turns that over to Mr. Wright, so that we are keeping all the records accurate each day, Monday through Friday, for the district. And so the work she's doing is the reason why we can continue to stay open at this time, so.
I don't know if any of you watch the show Friends very often, you have some nods. So as you know, with each episode that comes on, it's always entitled, "The One Where Something Happens." "A Day in the Life of Harden County Schools, The One Where We Successfully Serve Our Students While Managing a Pandemic." That's what we call what's going on right now, because our goal is successfully educating our students, still while managing everything going on, and being part of the family resource in school nurse world for the past 10 years in this position. This has multiplied that, but yet it is still a great evidence of when community and school systems work together with their teachers and their parents, what can be done in the face of horrific times. So she asked me to share what kind of, what happens. So for example, just a few minutes ago, I got a call from an administrator, we have a positive student case. This is how we walk through, and I will touch on as many details as you would like, and if you want more, I'll give some more to you. So the school administrator will call me and state what the case is, staff or student. After that happens, the administrator, they have already been, I don't want to say trained, but we worked on the protocols, and changed as our government and as the Department of Public Health has changed them. They complete a form that goes to the Lincoln Trail District Health Department, that includes all classroom seating charts, bus seating charts, lunchroom seating charts, any clubs, any athletics, anything that's going on in that staff or that student's life in that classroom. And you think that's pretty, that's probably a pretty daunting task, they've got it down to about 15 to 30 minutes, except for the bus, because obviously, they need to look at cameras. Mr. Quarter is very specific, and he wants to make sure that what the chart is is in accordance to the video. Once they've called me and they're working on their form that will be going to the Lincoln Trail District Health Department, I immediately call our superintendent, to which I just share, to let her know that what is going on, where the case is located, and so forth. I then inform our PR director, Mr. Jean Wright, he goes to working to any type of letter that needs to happen. What we have done and established as a practice is at each school site, for the first time that there is an on-campus, staff or student, on-campus individual positive, that entire student body is provided a letter. And then if there is an off-campus, the beginning of school, off-campus also included some kiddos that they never even, they had not even made it to school yet. They were already a case, and the Lincoln Trail District Health Department just let us know that those kids were not coming in. Or what happened specifically, to be honest, they were probably at home as a direct contact, maybe of a parent, and after that 8:24, because that's when we started our documentation, August the 24th, they tested positive, but yet they had never been in on any of our campuses, so they were considered off-campus. Another off-campus could be if it was someone in our online learning academy. We do keep all of those, so totals that I share with you include our online academy as well. In addition to Mr. Wright doing that, then I look on infinite campus, I see, are there other siblings and so forth throughout the district? I work with Mr. Stiff. Just because it's not a positive case doesn't mean we don't need to be explicit with any of our extra cleaning procedures, and he is always wonderful to contact the other schools, or I will contact them. An extra spraying occurs in sibling rooms, those siblings are not symptomatic, they're not the case, but they will most likely, 99.9%, because they live in that household, be considered at contact. We want all of our staff, all of our students, to know that we are doing everything we can to keep down the spread of this disease. So that is something else that we do. Building grounds has been wonderful and so forth. By that point, the Health Department usually has all the information, and just like a while ago, they started emailing me, we need an additional contact number, we can't get ahold of this parent. We need to know something else about the bus seating. They have one person that is a school contact there at the Lincoln Trail District Health Department, Melissa Phillips, I couldn't thank the lady enough. If you know her, make sure you pat her on the back at some point in time, she has been fabulous. She's the point of contact for all of, there's five counties that they serve, Marion, Meade, Washington, Larue, and us. Marion and Hardin are the, we're the only two that are in right now. And then once they do their contact tracing, how does contact tracing occurs? How does that occur? Excuse me. If it is a staff member, or if it is especially a younger student or a student under 18, the parent is always involved. The Health Department calls that family, calls that staff member, and based upon all the seating charts, everything the school has turned in, and what the individual that is the positive case, they determine what direct contacts are. and what the individual that the positive, that is the positive case, they determine what direct contacts are. The definition of a direct contact has changed just 24 hours ago. It used to be closer than six feet, longer than 10 minutes. A lot of people keep saying, "But I have my mask on." But I have my mask on. Mask has everything to do with reducing transmission of the disease. As far as being a direct contact, your safest is to remain farther than six feet. And where it used to be 15, excuse me, 10 minutes, it has now changed to 15 minutes. But with that 15-minute change, it's no longer a consecutive piece of time. So, for example, I work, I work very closely with Mr. Wise. Let's say his office is next door to mine. We have a lot of things that go forth. It's now cumulative time. I used to be able to say, well, I was never with Mr. Wise longer than 10 minutes in one block of time, but now it's cumulative. If I go out and speak to him less than six feet, three or four minutes. And then later in the day, two or three minutes, and so forth, because a lot of people thought, oh, I'm just safe as long as I don't do that under that 10 minutes. But it has now been changed to a cumulative time of 15 minutes over 24 hours. And then the other piece they added, it's been a few weeks since they've added this as part of the direct contact, hugging, kissing, touching, and so forth, sharing any type of eating or drinking, and then if you have any respiratory droplets. So if someone has sneezed on you, coughed on you, and some things like that. So, the total definition of direct contact, standing closer than six feet, longer than 15 minutes of cumulative time is the big word now. Hugging, kissing, sharing any type of eating or drinking utensil, and then also those respiratory droplets. So that's how the direct contacts stand.
Excuse me, how, how far is the reach back? It's 24 hours in, in, no, it's 15 minutes cumulative over 24 hours. But that's not, but then, but, but it's only back 48 hours total.
What we have found, mm-hmm, in the contact tracing, what we have found is was symptomatic, and that's the only thing that we've dealt with here. If someone is symptomatic, suppose they come into work on a Thursday, and that morning, they have the temperature, or they have the loss of taste, or they have the very, very sick stomach, and so forth. They get tested, and we'll talk about that a little bit further here in a minute, but they get tested and they are positive. The Health Department is wanting 48 hours back of information.
Okay.
And so forth. That, the disease, what we know about it, and we've only been around it for six to eight months, but what we know about it is that potentially 48 hours prior to presenting symptoms, you could have exposed someone else. So that's for that 48 hours. Great question. That's where it comes about. So at ALM, I was talking with Mr. Stiff and Mr. Sutton about numbers of staff and numbers of students, and we're going to go with the figure of somewhere around 16, 16,500 total staff and students that we serve in Harden County Schools. As we stand now as a district, having been open since August the 24th, as of 5:00 PM today, and Mr. Wright's going to go, you have one more added on there, because we did have one more added, and I just wanted to go ahead and tell. We have 27 total cases out of 16,500 folks. Of those 27, only 16 are active. And of those 16 active cases, nine are staff and seven are students. Of the 27 total cases that I mentioned earlier, 10 are staff and 17 are students. And when we talk between total and active, once they are allowed back, if you're a case, you're in isolation. That's the word they use. If you're a case, you're in isolation. Once you're no longer in isolation, you can come back to work or school, you're no longer considered active. So of our 27 cases, we have 16 active cases in Harden County Schools. Now, prior to Labor Day, I will share this information, because Ms. Morgan and I found this quite interesting. We had 11 cases. So a three-day weekend, some things happened and so forth.
So, can I stop you just a second? So those 11 that you mentioned that are not active were prior to Labor Day, but those are maybe back in school now?
Um, it just, it just, we're really not sure about that. I don't have that written down. But there was 11 total cases.
Yep.
And now there's 27 total cases.
Right. So the impact there was huge.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the, the isolation period, what is the official isolation period now?
The official isolation for a case is typically 10 days from onset of symptoms and so forth. And then, as far as direct contact, if you have been around somebody, is 14 days from that point of contact. We're learning new things. Like today I learned, if I had a three-year-old, and I take my three-year-old in and she gets tested, I'm her primary caregiver. There's no way for her to quarantine, isolate away from me, and me to quarantine away from her. I'm her caregiver. So she has her 10 days, that she is in isolation for being a case. I don't start my quarantine until she is complete. So that is an interesting fact. Because we were getting back dates that people are in quarantine 24 days and 27. We're like, what is that? And it's people with younger children. You can't, you can't quarantine and get away from that and so forth, because you're the sole caregiver for that three-year-old. I thought that was very, a very interesting piece.
On that point, something that's confused, I spoke with some other school people in another district. Something that's been confusing is the 10 versus 14. But 10 is for, you present symptoms, and then the, that count starts, and by 10 days, they'll know, your symptoms should be gone, you should be fine.
What we know about it.
14 is, the 14 days, though, is to allow, we know that it takes that long sometimes for symptoms to start.
Correct.
So that's why the, you don't, you don't show symptoms is longer than the, you have symptoms.
It was very confusing for our school personnel. We have had four of our cases, they started out as direct contacts. And we gave the return date for them as direct contacts. Once they tested positive, they were in their quarantine, they tested positive, their return date to school was shorter.
Yes.
Because once you have the, have contracted the virus, then you're going on and moving on with it. But if you're just a direct contact, that viral load has to build up in your body, and that viral load is something you'll hear more and more about. Because right now, if I was with Mr. Wright, and he found out that I was positive, I had tested positive, he really doesn't need to run and go get a test right that minute. If he had just been around me, and I'd just been coughing and had a fever, he needs to wait about four or five days to let that viral load build up in his body. Some people want to go ahead and get tested, and that's okay. Some people just need that security. And you can go right back in, on day five, and get tested again and so forth.
Okay.
Something really neat about these, the 20, not neat, but these 27 total cases, none of them can be traced back to any activities at Harden County Schools. So I do think that is important for us all to note and so forth, so.
And Janine, the other thing, do you mind to share about testing between your 14 days, what that does for your quarantine?
Pardon? Are you talking about the extended?
Like if a person decides to test on day five of their quarantine and they're negative, that does not lessen their quarantine?
Correct. A couple of folks said, well, if I get my test and I'm negative, can I go on back to school? They really want to get back to school. They really want to get back to work. But you still have to allow, just like Mr. Seago was saying, that time for that to all build up and so forth. So I don't, I want to be completely transparent. So we've talked about cases, and that's, there are folks that have been diagnosed with it. But I also want to talk about our direct contacts. Our direct contacts, right now, since August 24th of being in school, we've had 296 direct contacts. Of those 296 direct contacts, 159 are still quarantined. So that means around a, a little less than, about 137 there, their quarantine's done. Of those 159 that are still in quarantine, 39 are staff. Excuse me, 32, 32. 159 still in quarantine, 32 are staff. I apologize. Of the 290, I apologize. I have my little arrows drawn. 296 contacts, of those 296, 32 were staff. 159 total still quarantined, only 12 staff are still quarantined as direct contacts. Only 12 staff are still quarantined as direct contacts, and leaving 147 students. And I apologize for that.
Ms. Sutton, another item, they can be Harden County students and count as a contact, but that contact may not have happened on our school grounds. Is that correct?
The majority, and I wanted a percentage, but I don't have that. I would, I'm going to guesstimate between approximately 65% of all direct contacts had nothing to do with a case of the 27 cases in our school.
So what this means is largely, is that whether we are in school or not, most of this would have happened.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's what it looks like?
Yes, sir. The activities that have happened and so forth. And some of them have been gatherings, and so it wasn't just one contact. And I'll tell you, a lot of them are simply household. One person in the household contracted the virus, so therefore everyone was placed in quarantine as a direct contact. I do want to share the importance of some ah-hahs through all of this. One of them, the explicit following of protocols to our school representatives here and not our principals. I can't say enough about our attendance clerks, our office managers, our teachers, our building and ground staff. I mean, our, when Ms. Morgan comes back and talks to me, she can tell, my phone is ringing constantly. Bring the questions in. They want to make sure they're doing it correctly according to what the current, and you guys know, you've been watching this since March. Things change fast. And they want to make sure constantly they're doing everything correctly. And I think that is a huge part of our success. The parental support. For some reason, I had a vision, when we started into this, they're going to try to slide their kids in. No, sir, no, ma'am. They call our buildings on a regular basis and say, "My husband's tested positive. I want you to let you know my kids won't be in school. We haven't heard from the Health Department yet. But once we do," and then we have a protocol. They email me student name, person in the home that is positive. I put that on my spreadsheet. If it's been a day or two and we haven't heard the quarantine release date, then I'll contact the Health Department. I'm trying not to inundate them, because they are already overwhelmed and so forth.
They have, they have a pretty busy job right now.
Oh, an incredibly busy job.
Well, what you're saying is that communication is so effective for you. It helps you.
Mm-hmm. It's huge. They let us know what's on the horizon, I guess you would say. Our building and ground staff have been huge in keeping our, our buildings sanitized and not just clean for daily use, but when there's been a situation, when there's been a case, and coming in and taking care of it. The Health Department, Melissa Phillips again, and Stephanie Goff, we work hours, Saturday, Sunday. I got a memo today, or an email today, that said they were no longer open on Sundays. And to that, I'm like, okay, I might get Sunday dinner back in. But I'll be honest with you, it scares me, because now we've got to cram everything back into six days and stuff. Because COVID diagnoses do not stop just because Friday at 5:00, the dinner bell rings and so forth. But the Health Department has been absolutely wonderful. And then I sat here and talked to Kay, what was it, three years, four years ago, about school nurses when we started this, Charlie? I couldn't tell you. We, a huge success to the 22 school nurses that are in the building, the security they give, the immediate individual. I mean, one person came down, didn't have sense of taste. They meant, "Let's get you to your car. Let me call over here." We have 22 school nurses, four nurse practitioners, and one very important thing, and that is a COVID rapid testing machine that Dr. Loy made sure Harden County Schools had. Because the CEO of that company knew if we were going to be successful, we had to have that. We've done since August 24th over 300 rapid tests, not including the PCR, which is about the 48-hour one. The white box you'll see hanging out on the back, that's LabCorp picks those up and so forth.
How many PCRs tested?
I asked for a total number, and they did not have that, but they did have over 300, because they gave us 50 swabs. And our lead nurse, Amy Hall, knows how many times she's had to go back and continue to get. And please, share this with your folks in the community. They are set up like a Kroger clinic. They could see anybody. We obviously don't want outside, we can't have outsiders in our building. And stuff like that. But if you have somebody, if, people are bringing their spouses to be tested and so forth like that. If you have any type of connection to the schools and so forth, they, they drive up right behind John Harden, right by the tennis courts. That's where our nurse practitioner's office is. She comes up, she comes out from goggles and everything head to toe, swabs you, goes back in, and 15 minutes, you know. Now, Dr. Stack from DPH did say, "You must be symptomatic, or you must have exposure to a positive case in order to have the rapid test. You can't just have the rapid just because you want it." That's, the PCR is also there, but that was a Dr. Stack from the Department of Public Health. But I can't say enough good things about our school nurses and so forth. I don't know, Ms. Morgan, if you want me to share. You guys can see this on our website. Mr. Wright and I work together. He manages and keeps it. I give him the numbers.
I shared that with them today.
Anytime you want to, you can go do that.
I, I would like to share any of them. Just so you can get a gauge on staff students on campus off campus.
Thank you. Thank you.
I take the names off for obvious reasons.
Yeah.
And replace them with an X. As you can see, the legend on the bottom, if, if the block, if the box is colored in blue, that was on campus. If it's yellow, that means off-campus. Either an online academy student, it happened before. They didn't even get to school, but it happened after August the 24th, so we had to still count them in our totals. Red lettering means that person is still active, and that should match up with our 16 active cases. And then blue, if there's a thick blue box around it, that is our staff. And the only other explanation, there is a little difference between my chart and what you'll see on Harden County Schools. The Department of Public Health has added an extra layer to us, KDE, I don't know, is it Department of Public Health, KDE, somebody?
It was, the, the thing that was announced last week about the reporting, I believe that was Department of Public Health.
Public Health. Has added an extra layer.
Yeah.
And we have to report by school.
Yeah.
So if you see underneath Central Harden, that X with the HCS, that is a district employee. And when you look on our Harden County School site at our COVID chart, you'll see that person listed under a district. Obviously, you know, there's lots of job classes in our district that serve several schools. And that individual that was positive, I asked the Health Department, I'm like, who will you turn it in under? And they said, wherever the, the individual has more direct contacts. So that individual had more direct contacts at Central Harden than at any other building, like bus drivers. If you're trying to think, bus drivers, OTs, occupational therapists, physical therapists, those that go around and serve multiple schools and so forth. So under West Harden, you'll see a district person, and then under Lincoln Trail. So if you were to take this chart and compare it to the one on the website that Mr. Wright manages, those three will be the three district numbers that you see. Any questions?
Is it important to know how much a rapid test costs and who's authority, who's paying?
That's an excellent question. Cumberland Family Medical has made it very clear. They accept what your insurance pays. If you don't have insurance, then they will complete it and do what, you can do what you can. But they will make sure that it's completed.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. It's a great question.
Are there any plans to do the serology antibody testing at some point to know who's been exposed?
Cumberland already offers that. We've had several staff that have asked for that availability. I set, I set one up yesterday.
Interesting to some of us, because based on symptoms and such, before we knew, there's people that work here that, you know, probably had something before they knew it was something.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And they're completing those, those, taking the blood test and so forth. And on that, the only thing that they continue to say is, what we don't know about the virus is, will you continue to, is, is it past that three-month period?
Right, yeah.
And so forth.
Yeah, because we don't yet know how, how it works. We don't know how, whether immune, how long you'll have immunity if you do.
Correct.
We're counting on that you will, though, or we wouldn't be working on vaccines.
Absolutely.
This is very helpful. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I hope this gives you a good gauge. I hope this makes you even more proud of our district and what our teachers and our staff and building and, I just, I can't say enough about the folks. When you go to climb Mount Everest, you hope you have the best team at your side and can assure you, you do, and so forth, because there's no way.
Before you leave, I had a question before, and I thought I'd have to ask it, but you covered it. And, you know, when the Governor introduced the new system last week, and explained what we were going to have to do to, to how schools were going to have to report, I thought, well, I think we're already gathering all that information. The only thing is, we're going to have to slice it and dice it differently. And you answered that question, so good job on being prepared for that.
We, there are lots of curveballs. I can, my children will tell you, I am not the athlete in our home and so forth. But we have been thrown a lot of curveballs. Some of them have hit a square in the head. But that one, we kind of saw coming and so forth, working closely with the Health Department. The one piece that they have added, the layer that thought might be going to be tough, but once again, the Health Department, we partner together, they want what we report to be school-connected. So when, when you tell me a direct- So, when, when you tell me a direct contact, if, if you're a direct contact because your dad has it, you're not a direct, I can't turn you in as a direct contact, school-connected. And so, Melissa and I worked out a system already to where, when they send those names to us, that we'll have that set up.
Thank you.
Well, we put that information, Mrs. Sutton uploads that information to that state website, we'll provide that link on our website as well.
And I will tell you, right now, the state already has a website and I want to call somebody and say, y'all are behind. But, but I can't do that and so forth. I don't think they'd listen anyways. But we're keeping it, like I said, John and I every day at 3:00. Everybody has 4:00 with Andy, I have 3:00 with John.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. And again, they have worked incredible hours to make that. I do just want to talk about, to add to that, our school district is doing phenomenal. That does not lessen the importance of being aware. It does not lessen the need to follow the guidelines at all. If anything, this success tells us we can't let our guard down. We are experiencing right now what happened after Labor Day and what I've told people is you have to be, and you can tell from the sheet, you're going to have to be as committed outside the building as you are inside the building. And if we can get everyone to be that committed outside and to be safe and to wear masks and to social distance, and it is hard to do when you have family. But of these, the people who have had to quarantine, you've got to realize, some of those people on this list in quarantine have children that they had to be away from or aging parents that they care for that they had to be away from. So, it is, good as these numbers look, and I am incredibly proud because our administrators, our district office, like Janaye said, have worked endless, endless hours to make this successful. We can't forget the impact that one slip-up or one forgetting of not wearing your mask can have an impact on a very large population. So, I just, this is amazing to be this far in. A person said to me today, said, I'll be honest, I thought we'd make it one week. And so, I'm like, thank you for not sharing that three weeks ago, we appreciate that. But we can't let our guard down as this becomes the normal. So, but again, thank you.
I really appreciate the work that Ms. Sutton and the group has done and I feel like we were well ahead of the program with the nursing staff we put on at an expense to our board a few years ago and Cumberland Health Group. I don't know if it's all show or not, but they're out there, I really respect those people for being there. I mean, they seem like to me, they really want to make things right here.
One thing I need to share, I do want to add.
Janaye, you're going to have to come up.
Sorry. I should have said this and I thought of it, I'd written it down.
Kudos to our neighboring districts. For obvious reasons, Cumberland is a business, it's a corporation. And when we closed in March, it kind of left everybody, it left a lot of small businesses kind of with their hands in the air. So, when we came back and they announced finally, because they thought they could bring them back in June, they thought they could bring your school nurses, and then it was July and it ended up being just a few days before, well, some school nurses had chosen some different professions. So, Larue County had not opened yet and they still haven't opened yet. Well, here come a few of the Larue County nurses to cover some openings. And so, some of the school nurses that we have serving right now will be returning to their district. Mr. Loy, there, there's no longer a hiring freeze or anything, completely respected that as a good businessman, because I want these school nurses, I want Cumberland to be around and so forth. But I thought it was really neat, we have our Central Harden nurses driving from Anderson County every single morning to serve the students of Central Harden High School. And she didn't have to do that, but as opposed to sitting in Anderson County without kids and doing whatever, she's, she's over there at Central Harden. And so, just very impressed with Cumberland, the way they pulled their resources and so forth, because that's been extremely helpful and, like I said, kudos. It's like everybody's Kentucky's all together, we're going to do this.
That's great. They, they impressed me last year. I mean, I would go maybe to a John Harden ballgame and they've got a table set up out there and, you know, they're just, they're visible in our community and I mean, that's important to be a part of it.
It gets across the, the idea that healthcare is important and keeping our students healthy is important.
All right. Harden County's number one, we're going to stay that way.
Yes, sir.
Construction updates, we had some updates today from Mr. Drummond, Joe, I'm not sure what Joe's last name was from.
Joe.
Jones? J R A. Schools are coming along fairly well. The dates are not what we were really hoping for, but they're, they've been pushed back to, I, I think that the east is really going to be a challenge for them to get in by spring break if they make it to the end, but hopefully Lincoln Trail will maybe get it together there by winter break. So, anyway, it is what it is. They've had issues and the same as school districts and everyone else, they, they've had employee problems and this pandemic is, it's, it's hit everyone some way or another. They've had a lot of rain this year, so things have not been the best. We had plans to be in that school at this time, a year and a half ago and it didn't work out, so it's not, nothing, it's not the worst thing that can happen to us just because we don't get into school. We've got safe buildings that they're still in and, and we'll keep those buildings sanitized the best we can. They're the older ones and maybe a little more work to do there, but we'll be all right. And I think that, we, we talked about the punch list on them today. John, Joe, our Joe, in building grounds, everyone is doing punch list as we go, so I think when that building gets complete, hopefully that punch list, you can write it on the palm of your hand. And that, I think, they're really working towards it, so. As far as construction, you got anything else you want to say, John, they've covered good enough.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And we're down to the consent agenda. It's not a great lengthy one here tonight. Got approval of modified school schedules for our students with disability, approval of AC, EC TV contract with Brannenburg Telecom for live sports coverage. And you got approval of the school district calendar committee, of course, monthly financial reports, orders of the treasures, activity fund balance, and approval of fiscal year 21 working budget. And a change order that was on Lincoln Trail, it was a little minor change order on some cameras and wiring and so forth, not, nothing too. And that actually was a few months back and just got in here, I think. And that's about it. Anyone have anything they want to pull out or add to or whatever, we'd be glad to.
No. I'm good.
I'm glad we approved the consent agenda.
A second.
Have a motion and a second to approve a consent agenda. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. And we don't have any action items listed there tonight. New business, anyone have any new business they want to bring up? If y'all really want to start something, we could do away with that fall break and that would keep people here and, and we wouldn't have to worry about the pandemic spreading.
We're moving on, Charlie.
We're moving on.
No one's going to entertain that, Charlie.
Super tennis report.
Oh, no, I haven't recovered from the trouble you have caused in our office if you mention the cancellation of fall break, so. I want to touch upon just, again, the hard work of our teachers and administrators in the classrooms each day. They are just doing an incredible job. The online academy, I was in a classroom the other day, there were 32 students online and the positive relationships those students were having online with that person, 8:00 in the morning, those students were present on and they knew how to mute their microphones, they knew how to answer and then mute their microphones. Matter of fact, I thought they were doing better than many of our people at some of our.
Board members.
No, 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 not board members, but some of our principals. We had a virtual meeting the other day and we had to have a little discussion of how to mute and not have two things on. Someone almost lost their device because they couldn't figure out how to mute. But again, the teachers have just done a phenomenal job, so I just want to give a huge shout-out to them.
We appreciate it.
Next month, we are, I'm going to ask Mr. Sutton, have Ms. Slaven, who is our district job coordinator and many other titles, but I received a text this week from a parent and their child has started an internship with our child nutrition program. They were already in the pathway for culinary arts at EC3, they started that pathway. They are now a senior and they are doing an internship. And one of the things that we challenged Ms. Slaven with was, it's great for us to go to Mr. Wise, who owns a business, and to go to Swoop and say, hey, we have an automotive student, but we have an automotive program right here in Harden County, it's called our transportation department. We have a culinary arts program, it's called our child nutrition. We have an early childhood, it's called our early learning academy. So, there are multiple opportunities for us to utilize these people within district, utilizing the pathways already. So, Lisa has been out recruiting these businesses to hire our students. It gives them that opportunity to have that exposure within our district and outside of our district. I believe these opportunities, one of the things I shared with you all last year is we want to make sure all students are having the opportunities for these opportunities. So, she has worked on transportation, being able to do that. We're not going to transport one student to one location, but if we can find a business that would take five or 10, then we could provide that transportation. So, Ms. Slaven will come and share with you the components of that. So, it's really exciting times and then the month after that, we're going to ask our grant writers to come and share with you the multiple grants that we have received. There's a $1.2 million grant that I will be hearing about before the actual grant writer in the next two to three days. And again, we believe that will be very good news. So, lots of great things happening, just cannot thank the people. I do want to go back to our new buildings and I know we talked about them being delayed, but the product that you are getting because of the hard work and the follow-through that Mr. Stith and his group is doing is going to get you that quality product that you all have requested for the money that you're putting in from tax dollars, it's what you expect and that is happening. So, we greatly appreciate that. So, you have a right to be very, very proud of this school district.
Great job. All right. And I don't think we need an executive session or anything tonight.
No, sir.
Board calendar, October the 5th through the ninth, school dismissed fall break, if y'all don't want to drop it off, so, okay. October 15th will be our meeting at Bluegrass Middle School lunch meeting and of course, board meeting here. October the 22nd is KSBA 4th Region meeting and that's virtual. And that brings us right down to adjournments, so unless you all want to stay, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank y'all for coming out, have a safe trip home. Stay away from the COVID if you know what he looks like.
Get away from him.